We need to elect a vice chair. Are there any motions?
Well, I will make a motion. We put forth Mr. Drew Wade.
Okay. Any discussion on that, Mr. Wade?
No.
All right, hearing and saying none. A motion on the floor by Mr. Pugh for Mr. Wade to serve as the vice chair, at least for the remainder of the year. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Congratulations. You want to come up and sit next to me, buddy?
Do I need to move over there?
Uh, we can probably do it next to me. All right. Also, Mr. Ayers had to vacate his appointment as liaison to the Emergency Services Council. Is there any nominations?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to nominate you.
I respectfully decline.
Mr. Chairman, do we have to have, does that, does that seat have to be filled this year?
Chief Beam, could you come forward? Afternoon. Do you think the Services Council could get by without a representative this year?
I think we could if we have another meeting, one maybe emergency meeting for some funding, but the other, there'd only be one routine scheduled meeting. So I think that we could liaison back to you all through the county administrator if there is anything that comes up during that time.
All right, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, with that information, I would like to make a motion that we leave the seat vacant until 2024.
Okay, motion on the floor by Ms. Tucker. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. Very good. Moving on, is there a motion to approve our agenda?
Does that move?
All right, motion on the floor by Mr. Wade. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. All right, citizen comment. Is there anyone here that would like to address the board? All right, hearing and saying none. We'll move on to our ordinances. First read, the first ordinance is regarding solid waste. Mr. Popovich.
Yes, sir. The, the proposed revisions to the solid waste ordinance are basically technical in nature. They're simply eliminating verbiage language that really has no present day need. Some of the services that used to be provided are no longer provided, so those have been eliminated from the ordinance language.
Yeah. Board, is there any questions for Mr. Popovich? All right, is there a motion to move this forward to public hearing?
I'll move that the board direct staff to advertise ordinance 2023-5 for a public hearing on August 15th.
Very good. Motion on the floor by Mr. Wade. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That's an aye? Everyone votes aye?
Aye.
I vote aye. Very good. Moving on to amendment for requesting withdrawal of public hearing. Mr. Creasy.
Chairman, Board, good to see you all. This request came from you all a couple of months ago in what you asked to, for county staff to make an ordinance to where if an applicant goes through the public hearing process through the Planning Commission, is recommended to you all with a recommendation of denial or approval. If that public hearing has been advertised, that they either have to either withdraw their application, or it has to be heard by you all. This code change would not allow for any rezonings, conditional zonings, or special exceptions to be requested to go back to Planning Commission after it's been advertised for a public hearing with the board. Are there any questions for staff?
Chairman, I have one.
Okay.
In the event that they do withdraw, in that scenario you just laid out, is there a certain amount of time they have before they can resubmit?
No, ma'am. There is not. Only if they came before you were heard and denied, they would have to wait one year.
Okay.
Any further questions? I'm actually the one that requested this, so I appreciate the work that you've done on it. The reason I requested this to come forward is because we had a petition that had talked a lot to the neighbors, and at the very last minute, when we had a lot of citizens show up for public hearing, chose to withdraw at the last moment. I just don't think that's a really good precedence to be setting for our citizens. So I would move that the board direct staff to advertise ordinance 2023-7 for a public hearing on August 15th, 2023. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. Moving on, we have our consent agenda, which is the minutes from July 18th, appropriation of revenue for Amherst County Public Schools, and cost policy change for Freedom of Information Act. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion, any discussion? A motion on the floor by Ms. Tucker. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Moving on to new business is a resolution supporting line of duty benefits. Before we get into this, Mr. Popovich, I believe the chairman of the Nelson County Board Supervisors, Mr. Jesse Rutherford, would you like to say a few words? Thank you. And I appreciate our representatives from the county and state being here. Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, thank you so much for having me here. With us today, we have Senator Peak, our chief of police, Mr. Russell, and our board supervisor, Mr. Parr, who represents the West District. First and foremost, thank you all for allowing us to be here today and for thinking about participating in this movement. I'm proud to be here and say that this resolution has made it out of many counties, specifically Montgomery County, Augusta County, Green County, Madison County, as well as Nelson County. And there could be more, and we're finding out more as we go. Currently, it's on, going to be on the agenda for Fluvana County and several others. Potentially hand over, there's some discussions with Louisa and trying to get this on their agenda. It's an unfortunate reality why we're here today. For those who don't know, we in Nelson County lost one of our own, Mr. Wagner, who died in the line of duty. And as we know, these particular circumstances reveal spots in society that we got to fill. Mr. Wagner was a breadwinner for his family, and of course, you know, the family trying to figure out how to pay a mortgage was a real discussion. It shouldn't be one. And that's something that we realized in Nelson County, that this is a gap there. Our community, as many, as well as many members of your community, helped chip in to GoFundMe and many other different aspects in that family's life, and we've hopefully bridged that gap. However, we want to make sure that that discussion isn't needed. Line of Duty benefits is a critical aspect for our law enforcement so that when they serve, that if they do pass away, that they know that their families back home are going to be taken care of. In the event, for example, a Wintergreen officer and a Nelson County officer were on, let's just say, Beech Grove Road in an interaction, and both lost their life, the benefit would be extended to one and not the other. Obviously, there are some policy-related items that maybe Mr. Peak and the delegates who are going to be working on this could expand on. There's a lot of details to be figured out. Currently, we do know this, that not having an option is not an option. And of course, you all are not just neighbors to us, you are family. We share a lot together beyond our rail trail, a lot of culture, a lot of business, families, and, you know, it was a not, it was a, it was a no-brainer for us to ask you all to see if you'd be willing to participate with us. In terms of legislators, like I said, Mr. Peak and Mr. Oberenschein have agreed to carry this on the Senate side. On the House side, currently, we have Ellen Campbell and a plethora of others. Speak, the House Majority Whip, Mr. Weber and I had a long discussion, and we're hoping to get this through pretty expeditiously, and, but we need the support of localities just putting ink on paper, saying, hey, move forward so that we can get some of that. So, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And I wore my best suit today. I apologize. I do own a button-up, but where I was working in Dilwyn today, I had forgot, so, thank you.
We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
If you have any questions, we'll be here in the audience.
Mr. Popovich, do you have anything?
I have nothing further to add. That was very eloquent and said it all.
Board, Ms. Tucker, I believe you requested this be brought forth. Would you like to make the motion?
I would, Mr. Chairman, as soon as my computer cooperates with me. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I want to make a motion that the board adopt Resolution 2023-14-R.
A motion on the floor by Ms. Tucker. Is there any discussion? I would like to say that, you know, that hit very close to home for all of us, and when your community hurts, Horace does also. So, Senator, thank you so much for moving this forward. We appreciate it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Right, next thing is financial support for Amherst County Public Schools.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, first, thank you for having us here today. In the past couple of weeks, I've had great experience working with Mr. Bryant, Ms. McBride, RT from, Taylor from Davenport, and trying to get this figured out, what we're going to do. So, I do just want to have a presentation for you to kind of go through where we are, and you can kind of see how we got to where we got to this point. But again, thank you for having us here, and at least, at least listen to, listen to me as I make this request. So first, we look at the timeline for March of this spring. So in March, we opened the bids, May 1st, the bid period closed, May 4th. The board agreed for us to enter negotiations with the lowest bidder, which was Jameson Lewis, and July 25th, our board passed a resolution to request additional funding from you. Funding sources, just so you understand where the funding sources came from, so our school board set aside $8 million through ESTRA funds and CIP funds, and $800,000 in HVAC funds we received from the state. Of that, 1.354 was used by the county for debt service. We spent additional 1.265 of architecture engineering fees. We still have $397,000 allocated for architectural fees. It has not been spent yet. Hopefully, we won't need to use those, but those are set aside for that. Remaining balance from the school board side is $4,983,178. And if y'all have questions throughout, just feel free to interrupt. Funding sources from the county, board supervisors set aside $12,950,000. Of that, $239,47 was used on the Burley property. The county conservative estimate has accrued roughly $300,000 in interest, probably a bit more than that according to Stacy, but...
I'm being conservative.
Conservative. So it gives us remaining balance on the county side of $13,010,053. So the remaining project fund balance total is $17,993,708. For the high school renovation, again, the initial bid came in at $33,898. We have cut 2.898 million from that to get us to the $31 million mark. The baseball, softball, field house, we're sitting aside $1 million for that, so the total project cost is 32 million.
I have a question. What, what did you expect it to be?
I expected to be around, initially, before COVID hit, when all this process started, we expected to be between $18,000 and $20,000, $20 million. Again, the initial bid, the high school renovation again was 31 million, baseball, softball, a million. Total project cost again was 32. The remaining balance is $17,993,708, which leaves us a deficit of $14,6,292. That's where that $14 million is coming from. Just want you to know, that's where that, that's where the number came from. It didn't just pull it out of the air. That's an actual, real number. School construction grant, as you know, we applied for the school construction grant, and we didn't get the school construction grant. And the main reason we didn't get the school construction grant, according to the state, is our local composite index is .3048, and .3 was the cut score. So we're 48 thousandths of a percentage point of getting the funding there. Your debt service is .385 was the cut. So because you, as a county, have been fiscally responsible and have not accrued a lot of debt service, and because our local composite index is where it is, and the fact that you spent money in 2014, 15, 16 to new, put new roofs on our buildings and upgrade HVAC, the state felt that y'all had plenty of money and didn't need the grant. That's basically where, how that came out. I don't agree. To me, I think we're being penalized because you are being fiscally responsible. And other county, other jurisdictions who aren't are getting rewarded for not being fiscally responsible. So that's kind of where we are on that, and why we didn't get it. It is coming back up for reapplying. I can reapply. They're going to open it back up this fall. We will reapply again, and we're going to see what happens. But if the cut score stays at 65, we are looking at how we answer some of the questions on the high school. And if I look at just the auditorium, and I look at just the cafeteria, kitchen area, I think we do qualify for more points than, say, some of the other areas of the school. So we're going to look at it from that, that way as well. School construction funding, we also have set aside $2,390,000 in school construction money. This also came from the state in a different allotment, but this money initially was set aside for window and door replacement. These windows and doors would go to Amherst County High School, Amherst Middle School, Amherst Elementary School, Ameline Elementary School, Central Elementary School, and Temperance. Basically, everything but Manellison, Mass Ice Elementary, and AEC will be getting new exterior windows and doors from this money. The windows and doors were retrofitted at those buildings in the early 90s to mid 90s, and they were done by a company that's no longer in business. Matter of fact, they went into business about two years after they were installed. And so they're not, we don't feel they're safe, or are they efficient? Because we have gaps in doors that we can't seal up, so air is just, you can stand at some of the doors, you can just feel the cold air coming in or the hot air coming out. So we know we're losing energy there. Electricity per month, there's an average cost of about $100,000 for the division, and we spend about $15,000 a month in propane costs. So we spend about $1,380,000 a year in energy costs. We feel that upgrading these windows would cut that, and that's why we didn't want to put this money towards it initially, towards the other project. So where does it get us? So I just wanted to show you what would happen if, you know, if you funded me at 10.5, this is what would be, the additional cuts would include the CTE wing would have to be cut. We saved $2,351,000 there. We would cut the field house for $1 million, and we'd cut the toilet room renovations for $310,000 for savings of $3,661,000. Another option there would be to cut the field house for a million, take the window and door money, and put that towards the high school project of $2,39, still not due to bathrooms for 310, for, for savings of $3,349,000. That's if you funded 10.5. If you were to fund at 12, we would have to, the CTE wing could be cut for a savings of $2,351,000, or we take the window and door money, again, and put it towards the high school and not upgrade the other schools. If you fund at 14, that requires no additional cuts, and we can do the project in completion as, in its entirety. I do want to add that the auditorium, when we started this project, I said it then, I'll say it now, it's not just for the high school, it's for the community. I remember when Trooper Dow was killed, we had, they tried to find a place to do his service, memorial service, had it at the old auditorium, what we currently have now. It was not sufficient for that. There was no room. We couldn't do the service the way it needed to be done. There's nowhere else in the county to have a large service like that if we needed it. So we want this to be a community project. It's not just an Amherst County High School project, Amherst County Public Schools project. Also, for the field house, if you ever gone to a baseball or softball game in May, and you have to use the restroom, you're using a porta john. As a former assistant principal and principal at the high school, I received so many complaints from, from local, from our fans, county folks, as well as people from outside the community, about having to use a porta john at the baseball game. To me, it's an embarrassment, not only to the school division, to the county, and we need to do, I feel we need to do something about that, because nobody in May wants to go sit in a porta john to use the restroom when it's 90 degrees outside. No matter what, no matter how much we clean them, it's just not good. So I'll leave it at that. I do want to just say thank you for hearing us out, considering this as an option, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Going back to what you said about the CTE, I mean, not the CT, excuse me, composite index.
Yes.
And the fact that, and I agree with you. I think that we are being penalized for having been financially responsible.
Yes, ma'am.
For a long time. If we, if we were to indicate that we were going to support this in a, in a significant way, would the state then come back again and say, well, y'all don't need that grant because the county's got plenty of money and they can support it? Would we end up hurting ourselves?
I can't speak, I know if our debt service increases, then that gives us more, higher on the list for schools, divisions that qualify for the grant, because they look at how much your debt service is also in this formula. So I don't know if that would be a negative or not. I don't anticipate it being a negative, because other school divisions that didn't get the grant are also moving forward some projects. But I can't speak for the Department of Education. I mean, I was shocked that we didn't get the grant in the first place, to be quite honest with you.
I think all of us were, yeah.
So, a couple of questions. I'm sorry, Board, was there any other questions? So if we did move forward with the full funding, and you reapplied for the grant, and this might be a question for Mr. Taylor, and received the $5 million, if we've already let the contract forward, moving forward, could we use that $5 million and not, could we repay the, could we basically switch the money? You see what I'm saying?
Thank y'all for having me here today, RT Taylor, Davenport. The answer is, we'd have to confirm with VDOE, but with respect to the mechanics, let's assume for a second they, we get started and we get the grant subsequently. If we've already put the financing in place, there's a 10-year no-call typically on the VPSA pool. So we could try to configure so that we get some of the money through, let's say it's an interim facility that matches the grant and expectation of doing that, and then just hold that portion out. And then if we don't get it at some later date, then we could permanently finance that through a future VPSA pool. So the, the approach there would be sort of similar to what we're going to talk about in a minute, although we could carve out a portion that we think we're due or could qualify for through a subsequent application process through VDOE, and sort of seg, segment that out and match our interim funding to match that, but...
You always have the best answers, you know? So, another question. So, Dr. Wells, if, and there's, I guess there's just multiple ways you could look at this. So if, if we chose just to do the 12.
Yes.
Right, and take the two from the windows and doors, which I don't want to do, but if we did, how would that look if we were applying for the grant to fix the windows and doors?
I mean, I could, I could do that, but it'd be specific for each school, so I'd have to do the cost breakdown per school.
Oh, I see. Okay. All right.
So that'd be a separate application per school?
Mr. Wade?
Yeah. So, I know, as you say, we're being penalized for being fiscally responsible, but I don't think, you know, that's a cause for us to jump the gun and change that, especially for this. When we started this venture, you know, the, the key objectives were the auditorium expansion.
Right.
So based on the cost breakdown you sent to the county administrator, there are certain, you know, things earmarked in that. Have we considered cutting those? I mean, we could potentially get the auditorium, the arts classroom, renovating the auditorium for the nursing CTE, the band room into the cosmetology CTE, the culinary CTE, the welding CTE, the agriculture and horticulture, and even the renovation to the existing parking lot. So those are the primary objectives. Why can't we move forward with that approach? And the funding for that comes right in under what's currently remaining for the project.
So when I, when I looked at it, if I look at the auditorium and fine arts classrooms, that's $13,649 to do the auditorium and fine arts. That doesn't, that doesn't count the kitchen or the cafeteria. So that's $9 million right there. The parking, we'll still need to put parking in. So the Burley property parking comes in at $1,537. So we still need to look at something there to add those 109 spaces in.
Do you just restrict who can drive to school?
Well, it's not for school parking, it's for event parking. So we have plenty of parking for driving to school. That's the, that's the hill lot and the senior parking lot. But if we have events, we're losing about a, estimate 109, 110 spaces. So that was the reasoning behind the Burley property being purchased. But still, that comes in around, if you take that, do the Burley parking, and you renovate the existing parking lot to do the changes in traffic patterns, that's going to bring you around around 17,198. So you could do the auditorium for $17 million. We'd have to redraw how we connect the auditorium and the entrance in the back of the school, since you won't have that ca- since you won't have that cafeteria space there. So that'd be some engineering fees and stuff like that. So I'd probably say around $18 million to do that and the parking and reroute all that. And that would get us that.
Within, within not.
That gets us where we are. So if that's the, if that's where this board wants to be on the funding aspect of it, then I would respect that, and it is doable. I think as we're looking at this project from a holistic approach and looking at the high school in general, that wouldn't give us the vocational, it wouldn't give us the vocational wing, because the parking areas, and that $2 million to $3 million for the parking takes away that 2.3 from the vocational wing, so we wouldn't have as much of that.
Even if you include the parking, that brings you up to 19.
Yeah, it puts, yeah, if you do, the 19 to 20 would get you the vocational wing.
Right.
And the auditorium, but it wouldn't get you a new kitchen cafeteria.
I think that's reasonable.
So I'm just.
Primary objectives in my mind, and that's, that's kind of where I sit on this, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I, I tend to agree with Mr. Wade, I think those all can be done. I think this board did, did its job, and, you know, we gave you the money that you all asked for when, when you came. Of course, you don't know how much inflation would impact all of these items, but we did do what we were asked to do, and we provided good benefits to the teachers this year as well as all the staff. I mean, I, we can't say we haven't did our job as a board, I think we have. The one thing that, I think we can do all of those, and then the other thing I would like to see us do, there's a state code 58-1, point 1-605, additional local sales tax and use of, for use of renovation and construction of schools. It could be put on as a referendum, not this year, but it would have to, have to be next year. We could look at doing that, it'd be a referendum, and 1% of sales tax would go towards future school.
Yes.
And construction.
Yes, sir. So Mr. P, in the fall, we had a conversation with Senator Peak and our delegation, and they said they would not support that at the General Assembly. So we, we tried that, so they, they said they would not support that because it seemed, they saw it as a tax increase, and he would not, he would not bring it forward in the General Assembly.
It has been known in other.
Yeah, you have to have your local legislator bring it forward and support, and they usually use passes. But when we talked to our delegation, they said they would not support that.
Okay, well.
Mr. Bryant and I self both spoke with him. So I would, I'm in favor of that. I would love to move it forward, and maybe as a board, between the two boards, we can work with our local legislators and get them to bring it forward. Because I think that would support the schools for construction money. But when we had that conversation with our local delegates, they said they would not support that.
Yeah, and because we're being asked to fund this through an increase in our meals tax from 4% to 6%, and I can't support that right now, especially, I mean, I don't know if any of you have been to the grocery store, but groceries are rather expensive. Feed a family a fork, it costs a lot of money, I don't know, $300 a week or more, I mean.
Well, this would be on prepared meals.
But prepared meals, yeah, I know, but still, if you go out to eat, then that's an additional 40, additional 2% you're going to be paying. So I think we should go for what was planned, Mr. Wade, what he laid out, and I would support that, and then come back next year and try to see if we can do anything additionally once the tax revenues come in, and if we have any additional ability for some debt service without raising taxes substantially, then I'd be willing to look at that.
Tucker.
I have thought about this so much, and every time I think about it, it makes me mad. Because I see localities in Northern Virginia, they've got a larger tax base, they've got Taj Mahals for schools. The kids have access to so many resources that we don't even think about down here, much less have the ability to enact. And we are widening that gap between the haves and the have-nots, and our kids are suffering, and it just makes me mad. I think that our current formula, and Senator Peak, you know I love you, but.
I know, always.
But you know, and I know you feel my pain, I know you feel my pain, it's, it's not a fair system. And I don't know what we do about it, that's a conversation for another time, but I'm pretty torqued about this whole thing.
And, you know, as somebody who's socially and fiscally conservative, I hate coming to you and requesting this, but I'm also trying to look out for what's best for our school system as well and the county. So that's, that's where I'm torn as well, ma'am, because I hate the fact that I have to come here and request this when there's a state grant out there that I felt we should have applied, we should have qualified for. However, that is where we are, and again, I would take, you know what my, you know what my ask is, but whatever, again, I don't have taxing authority as a school board or a school division, you do, and so I can't, I can't control that. But I'll, I'll take whatever additional funding you see fit to throw our way so we can get this done, as much of this project done as possible.
Senator, would you like to address?
Since your name's been thrown out quite a bit today.
This is not why I came, I should have left with.
Well, when you moved from there to there, I thought you had gone.
I should have left right after the resolution that I was here for, and this just happened to turn, I want, first of all, when I came over, Dr. Wells contacted my office and after they were turned down for the grant, and we, we had a great conversation with him, and I don't think I've told Dr. Wells, but we also had a Zoom call with Secretary of Education, Ms. Gadera, and her two main assistants who are involved in these things about how y'all are being penalized because you run your county well, and how, what a terrible precedent that sets. And she advised that they will be meeting in the fall, the Board of Education, so I have some contacts there, we will be contacting them, there is still money left to be awarded, a significant amount of money. And so they also supposed to be contacting Dr. Wells, somebody's supposed to help you with the reapplication, and some things, because it is, what they told me, I believe in that Zoom call, it is up to the, the county kind of puts what they feel the condition is, is that correct?
We put the conditions, and then they looked up our local composite index as well as the debt service.
So you need to reassess the conditions you put in that application, and make sure that you, you look at it very, very critically when you put the condition in. But the board's aware of that as well, and so we, they will be reconsidering this, but as this gentleman said, nobody knows what the VDOE will or won't do, so can't make any promises there. And I would just say on the sales tax referendum, our, our locality generally in this area, and Republican officials in general have opposed those as tax increases. You are unfortunately, as far as I'm concerned, going to be represented by a different senator next year who might be inclined to, to bring that, and depending on the makeup at the General Assembly, it might, would get through. It is terrible, there are a hodgepodge of jurisdictions that have passed this or have at least brought the referendum, sometimes it gets through, sometimes it doesn't. We do not have a uniform standard for that, and we'll see how that comes up down the road. And then Supervisor Tucker, you know, I love you as well, even when you are mean to me, but, and I'm used to that, that's okay. But that, no, you were not, no, you're not. That's, the, the school funding, you know, we feel like in our neck of the woods, we don't get enough, but I tell you, and I defer to Senator Newman, who has represented y'all in the past and is so knowledgeable on finance issues. The school, I mean, when you talk to the people in Fairfax and Alexandria, they look and they see a dollar and 50 of theirs goes away where everywhere else gets income. And so it, when we change that formula, we have to be very, very careful that it does not harm us. And with so much power, having gone to Northern Virginia in the past, we've been, we've kind of fought that because they want to keep more, because they generate a lot of tax dollars up there. So I know we have concerns about the formula, but they have concerns about it too, and their concern is that we're getting, they're sending out more than they take in, it all goes down, and maybe more even to deep southwest Virginia than it does in central Virginia. But we'll have to be very careful, and we need to have people in positions of power, which we do have in the House right now, to make sure nothing bad happens for central Virginia. With that being said, I hadn't planned on addressing y'all, it's great to be here, I'm sad that I won't be representing you come next year. I'll answer any questions, or.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, and thank you for that resolution. We're going to do everything we can to look out for the, for the officers, and I'm on my way to Alta Vista for National Night Out, and I know they've had them in all our counties, and, you know, every, every day, no matter how safe a place, they, their life is at risk, and, and we appreciate y'all passing that, thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
Okay, Dr. Wells, let's, let's start at the beginning. Okay, so let's talk about the different components. You got the auditorium, right?
Correct.
You got the CTE.
Correct.
You got the voag stuff.
CTE vocational tied together.
Oh, that's all together, okay.
Yes, sir.
You got the parking lot.
Yes, sir.
You got the fieldhouse.
Yes, sir.
Right?
And the cafeteria.
And the cafeteria, okay. All right, so how much is the auditorium?
Auditorium by itself is 13,649. Auditorium and the three fine arts classrooms, band, chorus, and theater classrooms on the backside is 13,649,645.
All right, CTE voag.
CTE voag, I don't have that number written down, but it's around 2.3 million.
Parking lot?
Parking lot, the burly parking lot came in at 1.5. And then reworking the existing parking lot once you get the auditorium built, and all that came in at 2,010,897.
At how much?
2 million.
Working the.
To rework the existing parking and the paving and all that around the new auditorium. I think it came in high, but that's the price they cited.
So then the auditorium is really 15 points.
Auditorium, if you take that 2 million plus the, that's 15. To do the parking lots and the auditorium, again, it's 17,198.
Okay, fieldhouse is about a million.
Fieldhouse is a million.
And the cafeteria?
Cafeteria came in around nine to do the, the new commons area and cafeteria.
Nine million dollars.
Yep.
Okay. So if you did the auditorium, the CTE, that's 17, 18, 19 and a half, and the fieldhouse, you're looking at about 20.5?
I would say 21 to be, I mean.
21?
Just to pad it just a little. Now, we might find some savings in there as well, I mean, but I think the 2 million, the 2,010 is probably, I feel, but I'm not, I'm not a GC, so I can't, that's just the prices they gave us.
So at 21, how much are you short?
At 21, I mean, that does everything but the cafeteria.
I mean, but how much money do you have?
I have, right now, we have 17,998.
Right at 18.
Right at 18 million.
So you need $3 million?
Yes.
Chairman, kind of point of clarification.
Yes, ma'am.
For those that are watching live feed, please confirm that when we say the CTE wing, we're also talking about vocational and ag education, that's included in that.
All that, so that'd be, that would include the, the new classroom for the ag science classroom, that would include the expansion of the welding classroom, that would include renovation, a slight renovation in culinary arts, that would include a new nursing. Yes, I'm. Well, I can't move, so I wouldn't have that one, part of the cafeteria was going to be renovated to put the foreign language classroom, so I wouldn't have that, the ag science class, but I would have, I could do the other classes.
You would not have the ag science class?
I mean, that's the one class I wouldn't get because of the four classrooms at Foreign Language now is currently where that would be, because that's going to the existing cafeteria. Thank you, sorry.
Thank, thank you, Dr. Wells.
Yes, ma'am. Sorry for that, I just trying to work it out then.
Just for discussion purposes, Mr. Wade, I think you're right, when we first went into this, it was the auditorium, right? And I think, well, okay, but I, I don't think you can move forward with those projects without addressing the parking issues. Absolutely cannot do it. So if you look at that, you're really at 20 million. I would say our baseball and softball teams consistently, you know, they, they work very hard, and, you know, their facilities are atrocious, really. The fact that they don't have fieldhouses, it's just, it's horrible. So, you know, I, I could go along with delaying the cafeteria stuff right now, because it looks like to me it would probably die in a 2-2 vote or possibly 3-1 vote on this 14 million request, but, so it looks like to me we need to come up with $3 million additional. Now, that being said, I think you should go back, sharpen your pencils, look at it, I think you need to have cafeteria designed, okay? But just reading the tea leaves, I don't see it being approved right now. So, Mr. Taylor, what do you think we could do on a $3 million approach?
Chairman, before we get to that point, can you lay out again to me what you just said that would be included?
The auditorium, the CTE voag, although there's a question on one of the voag classes, parking lot, and the fieldhouse. So the, that big cafeteria, the glass part, and those new restrooms down the center part would not be included.
We would have to tie in the existing auditorium to the building, so I don't know how, when they do the redesign with the architecture, architecture, engineering look, we will still need to have those restrooms, I'm just not sure how, so we'd have to revamp how we tie in the auditorium to the building and how that entrance is, how that backend's going to look. So I can't speak for sure on that, but I'm thinking that some of those restrooms there may have to stay because we're doing the auditorium.
Fair enough.
But, but you would lose, again, you'd lose your cafeteria area, you would lose renovations of the old auditorium minus the nursing classroom where the stage area is, and you would lose that one classroom for the egg lab, for the hydroponics and the egg science lab, based off of what we just discussed with that, with that money.
I just got, I have to say this for the record, that with agriculture being the biggest financial driver here in Amherst County, the fact that that's one of the things that we're going to cut, I'm opposed to that.
Okay, hold that thought, yes, ma'am.
You were going to ask RT about, Mr. Taylor, about how we could make 3 million work? In the staff summary, you'll remember that we said we have no revenue stream for any of the three options. No matter what you do, we don't have a revenue stream to fund it. It can be three, it can be 10, it can be 12, it can be 14. We, we don't have a revenue stream identified that would pay the increase at this point.
You're telling me we have no debt service capacity?
Not in the current year budget.
I get, yeah, okay.
You know what I'm saying, like, we, we would have to figure it out, but we don't have, we have come so close to crossing where the revenues are less than the expenses every year. I do not have a revenue stream that I could say could pay the increase in debt service right now, or in the next budget year. That's why we put that statement in the staff summary.
Yeah. All right, but, but hear me out, so. So basically you're at, we said 15.6 for the auditorium and the parking lot, the existing parking lot reworked. so basically you're at, we said fifteen point six for the auditorium and the parking lot, the existing parking lot rework, right?
So between the current auditorium, the new auditorium is thirteen six forty-nine, six forty-five. To renovate the existing parking lot that's back there is roughly two million. That puts you at fifteen, fifteen six fifty.
Very high to me.
It did to me, too.
What, what are they doing to it?
Well, they were renovating that plus around the backside. Some of that would probably come down if you're not doing the cafeteria, because some of that was fitting in around the cafeteria and the new loading docks and stuff like that for the existing cafeteria. So some of that would probably come down. But until I have a chance to discuss that with the architects and engineers, I wouldn't know how much that would drop. So that's just the initial price they gave us in the initial bid.
And when is the brief submit will due for the fall? State?
Well, the.
State?
It's October.
It's August twenty-eighth is the application due date. And just by making an application, you're not obligated to participate when they go to sell their bonds. So you could get an application and just to hold a place in line for the fall pool. And you would have until.
We're talking about the same thing, right? The state funding, the state fund.
No, okay.
No, I'm talking about the state.
Grant.
You're talking about the grant.
Yeah.
So they haven't released when it's going to come out yet. They just said it is going to come back out and we can apply. But again, I'm not guaranteed to get it. But if I were to get it, then we could use some of that. If y'all came in at, say, twenty-two million or twenty million or whatever number you come up with, and we say, they, they say they'll give us five point five or six, because the total project cost is still thirty-three, thirty-one million dollars, right? Then we could apply that into the cafeteria, but I can't guarantee that I'm, I can't rely on that money because I'm not guaranteed to get it.
Of course.
But it is, I think we could utilize that money with some changes to offset. And we're also, I mean, just so y'all know, we were also putting five hundred thousand dollars from our cafeteria to buy the equipment for the caf, cafeteria equipment came in at one million dollars. So we're, we've already obligated five hundred thousand dollars to buy, purchase the new equipment from us. So that's what helped get that price down a little bit. I mean, everything, inflation's killing us across the board.
The current proposal that we've got and the, the money associated with that, how good is that for, before it goes up again?
They've kind of held us pretty close, pretty good with it right now, but I think if this went like a, inflation right now is what, four percent? Eight percent, whatever it is, four to six percent right now. So you figure the inflation rate at four percent. So it's going to go up four percent over the year. And at nineteen, twenty million dollars, that, that's a pretty hefty penny every year.
Realistically, let's talk about construction timelines. Obviously, you've missed the construction window this year, right?
So talking with Jameson Lewis, they said once they get the green light, they can be breaking ground within thirty to sixty days.
Yeah, but the design's not even finished, right?
Well, now, the design was, but it's not.
Oh, it was, okay, but now it's not, yeah.
But if we cut, if I have to change, I have to change the design and look at that aspect of it. I mean, the footprint for the auditorium is still the footprint for the auditorium. The footprint for the vocational wing minus the, that's, that one classroom is still the footprint down there. So those things are still happening. Could still happen. The just, the redesign would be tying in the auditorium proper into the building, so you don't have that commons area and new cafeteria. So that would be the area where the redesign would come in. But I think the backend, where the three classrooms would be moving forward with the auditorium, would kind of still be locked in. I would not want to move anything forward from its initial footprint, because if we do find additional funding, then I will still want to put that cafeteria in place, because cafeteria now, some of y'all were high school students, David, you were there. In fact, it's the same thing when you were there. And just lines of sight in there and supervision there, it makes it difficult. And that's why we wanted to upgrade and move it. But it's still service school, but it's not ideal for what we want to do from a safety and supervision standpoint, as well as an event standpoint, because we want to use that commons area for events and so forth, that didn't need a full auditorium.
Are there any safety enhancements to the building that are included in this construction?
In this, no. We do have a safety, well, as far as the entrance to the back of the, the back of the school, yes. Those are the enhancements there. We've applied for another three hundred and ten thousand dollar grant to do three M windows and things. Those three M sheets on our lower first floor windows all around the building. So that's in a different, that's in a different grant we're applying for. But you would have a vestibule in the back, so like you have in the front now with the new construction.
Board, it doesn't seem like there's any consensus here. So you're probably going to hate me, but this is what I'm going to propose, okay? You're, you're kind of hearing the gist of things, right? And you're kind of hearing that there might need to be a little bit of redesign, all right? I would propose you go back and look at the numbers again, okay? And I'm, I'm asking staff and Davenport to go back and look at what the debt service would be on three, three million additional dollars, okay? Because it ought to be easier to look at three million than it was fourteen million, all right? And come back to the next board meeting and let's discuss it again.
I can have rough ideas on numbers about the next board meeting. From my point, I might not have a down-to-the-dollar ballpark, but I can give you a rough idea on what they estimate it would cost with the given numbers and things like that. They're going to have to do a new, a new engineer and design and stuff like that as well, so we'll have to.
Boy, that's, that's my best offer at this point, unless one, you want to put a motion on the floor about the other. But I just think there's a lot of moving parts to the.
Agree.
All right.
Did you want me to come back and address your initial question when I first got up about the cash?
I don't remember what it was, RT. Can you tell me? What was my?
It was about the, the talking through the cash flows.
Yes.
And I think it might be, I know we could be downsizing this, I get it, but I think if we focus on page fourteen to talk through, it's, it's the ten and a half million scenario, and it's not exactly linear, but you could scale it back based on three if you wanted to. I think, I think what we're dealing with right now, to Stacy's point, is there's a sticking point. You've got a great natural step down in your debt service over the next few years, okay? And that's what we've been trying to get around to get things done. So if you recall back last spring, when we did the twenty-two V P S A initial issuance, I think, for this project, if you look at page fourteen, and I'm going to step you through the columns just real quickly, but I think what I want to focus in is the cash flows on the right. So first and foremost, column B is your existing debt. And that had a natural decline. As you can see, it steps off from, down from four and a half million down to one point eight million by twenty thirty-two, okay? So your current budget is around three point nine million. That is dedicated toward debt service. In column D, per the plan that we entered into last spring, we had one point three five million dollars earmarked to help us shave those peaks to get, to grow into this debt service around that hump. So net-net, at the end of the day, we've got to find a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars per year over the next three years. That's column B. And then it drops down to only needing about sixty-eight or seventy grand a year for the next three years. And then, once your debt steps down in thirty-two, you have two million dollars in annual cash flows available to fund projects. Okay? So what we did under column F is took this ten and a half, for illustration purposes, the ten and a half million. We structured it a bit. We cut off a few years on the back end to mitigate some of that structuring cost, if you will. And at the end of the day, in column G, we've still got in budget year twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven, that same one eighty-two, because we're capitalizing interest. So you have no additional impact for this, call it completion funding. What happens when we do the ten and a half million and we bring on debt service for that? For a few years' interest only at five and, five hundred thousand dollars, you would need to find roughly seven to five hundred thousand dollars per year thereafter. So if you look at twenty-eight through twenty thirty-one and add those, call it per year, what that adds up to be, it's roughly two point four million dollars. So to Stacy's point, we don't currently know where those dollars would come from on a consistent future revenue stream. However, if we had fund balance over and above the one point three five that we identified, you could use those additional monies to shave. I say that only because in the following year, if you look right below that in twenty thirty-two and twenty thirty-three, where we have, you see the green numbers, one point one, call it one million one fifty and one million one fifty, you could then put back that two point three million dollars and replenish the two point four you pulled out to get through those peaks. So over the next, whether you see the seven oh three, the five eighty-nine, the five eighty-seven, and the five eighty-nine, that totals two point four. So instead of generating additional tax increases or anything, if, if that's not the political will of the board and you don't want to raise taxes, maybe there's a one-time use of those, call it reserves, to get you through those four years. And then the next two years, when your debt takes that big step down, you could then replenish your fund balance reserves. Does that make sense? And then that way, you're just getting yourself through that hump. Now, it doesn't have to be the ten and a half million dollar scenario. It, it could be whatever scenario. I'm just picking on this one because it's ten and a half sort of round in my mind. But that's the one that I thought would be helpful to step through, and you could see sort of the, call it a bridge to the end, right? You, you get across over the one-time uses of money over a four-year period, and then over a two-year period, you replenish. And you haven't raised your taxes. If I heard what you were saying, I think that was the, sort of the hurdle that we were trying to clear. And I, I just, this is on the fly, so Stacy can slap my hand if I've misspoke or stepped out of the, stepped out of bounds or anything. But that was just a concept that, as you're talking and I'm looking at the numbers, trying to figure out how you can accomplish your mission, that's what I'm trying to think through, is help you all get to where you want to be. And it, again, I'm not pushing for any particular scenario. I'm just trying to help you think through how to best, if you scale that back, those numbers get smaller.
Yes, ma'am.
So in that scenario you just laid out, is that for the fully funding, fully funded amount, or is that for a portion of it?
Ten point five, we would still have to have some cuts. So if you think back. So the ten point five million here, I had two options there. One is to drop the, cut the fieldhouse. One is to cut the windows and doors and toilet rooms. That saved three million dollars. And then the other option was to, option one, which was the CTE wing for two point three five, the fieldhouse and so forth.
Oh, yes, absolutely. If y'all would like to bear with me and indulge me for another second.
Can you put it on the screen?
Oh, yes, hold on. Bear with me. I'll get there. Oh, God. This is really tiny, so let me blow it up a little bit.
Yeah, there you go. That's what I was going to say.
All we care about are the first few years anyways. Just give me a second. Is that good? Is that clear for y'all?
Yes.
I can see that.
All right. Do you want me to talk in front of that in point, or do you want me to just talk from here?
Whatever, make you comfortable.
All right. So I'm going to have to do some quick math, too. So on this particular case, let's see, let's call it eight hundred times four. Right? So three point two million. So you still have your first, your next three years at the one eighty-two, which doesn't change from the original plan when we borrowed the first tranche in the spring of twenty-two. That's the one eighty-two per year for the next three years that we got to factor, okay? So put that to the side for just a moment. You've got eight seventy-three, seven fifty-nine, seven fifty-seven, and seven fifty-nine. So let's just, in round numbers, that's about three point two million dollars, okay? After that, you're going to be replenishing back if you use one-time monies to the tune of eight fifty-one per year. So basically, you've got a four-year cycle where you're pulling reserves to shave those peaks as opposed, in lieu of raising taxes or generating additional revenue sources. Then, starting in thirty-two, when your, when your debt steps down from four million to one point eight, that's, you've got a natural decline, as we like to say, you actually budget three point nine continuously. So based on your budget and your drop down in debt service, you gain that portion to keep programing towards your capital needs. All I'm saying is, in the next several years following that drop, you put eight fifty-one back into reserves and replenish part of that three point two. Then you put eight forty-eight back in, and you keep putting it back in over a four-year period, basically, so that you make your reserves whole. And that way, you've gotten through that sticking point on whatever something. And this is the fourteen million dollar scenario. So this gets it, Dr. Wells, fully funded? So that's fully funding the project as presented. Again, it takes a little bit of discipline, making sure we, and I know Stacy is disciplined when it comes to budgeting. So I have no fear on making sure we're budgeting our level three point nine. And then as we step down, we don't lose it to somewhere, it doesn't get absorbed over operations or something, is what I'm saying. So we end up getting these little surpluses in green over that four-year period and replenish what we took out to get through that sticking point. If that makes sense.
So you're saying.
And there's some conservatism built into what we're running here. We've, we've run it at current market plus fifty basis points, because we got some leg, some room to run between now and when V P S A prices have gone in mid to late October. So Rains can, Rains can bounce around between now and then, but we've got a relatively good cushion. And I, let me also say, and I can point it to you, to which page, but I'll just speak to it because I know what the number is. Right now, what we're running here for your debt service is at four point one percent. That's current market plus fifty basis points. So we've got some fifty, half a percent built in for cushion. So minus that, that's three point six percent on twenty-five-year debt. Right now, in the SNAP program, today's rate is five point four eight percent. Not saying you can keep all five point four eight percent as you're drawing it down. The arbitrage consultants and SNAP track the numbers, and it's a blended calculation over the next twelve, eighteen, twenty-four months, however long the project. My point is, those interest earnings can further offset what you might have to pull out of fund balance over the next several years to cover that, those peaks. So you're borrowing at three point six to four point one percent. You're earning five point four eight percent from SNAP during the construction period. So some of that arbitrage, as they say, you get to take the benefit of and use that maybe toward paying some additional costs that might pop up or interest expense.
Saying there is a mechanism by using fund balances, thereby we would not need to look at raising middle taxes?
Potentially, yes, sir. We can, we can fine-tune the analysis with Stacy and Jeremy and Dr. Wells to figure out between county and school reserves, how we might get there. But I think we feel pretty, I feel pretty comfortable with y'all's current position. As you got dinged for the initial application to the V D O E, y'all are very well-run financially. And it's a good problem to have. I mean, I know you didn't get the grant on the initial application, but that's a good problem. So we can use some of our reserves. I don't think we'll dip below our policy levels. And if, and if we did, if we did, that's not the end-all. What we would do is establish our plan to use that drop over those subsequent years to replenish those reserves. And that's completely doable. It's about going into it knowing, hey, we might get near or even dip through our policy floor, but we've got a plan to replenish. And that's written into your policies.
And this would, this scenario would fully fund the program, right, Dr. Wells?
It's under fourteen that we were, were fully funds everything we were asking.
Well, I, I'd have to see more, more information on our fund. We spent one point nine million dollars of our fund last year for capital improvements in our county budget. So, you know, if we do that, we're, we're going to, as a county, we're going to have some serious problems with funding our capital improvements in the, during those years. problems with funding our capital improvements in the, during those years. I mean, we use a substantial amount of that fund on a yearly basis to fund our capital improvement.
Yes, sir, Mr. Pugh. And I think just for, to put a finer point, this is looking at the debt service program in a vacuum. This is separate and apart from the PEGO. So whatever is going to or from fund outs for one-time cash PEGO projects, what we're saying is we're not going to steal from this cookie jar. We're going to take this cookie jar, when it, when we hit surplus mode, and put it back into the main cookie jar.
But your concern is if we did this, what effect it would have on our PEGO projects, capital projects, right?
Yeah, I mean, it would, it would have some, it would have an effect.
I could run the ten-year thing, uh, my ten-year analysis. It's already done for this past budget year and I could add this debt service in there and see where we fall and to see if we can, how much we're gonna need to take out of fund balance.
I still, I still, I mean, I'd be more willing to agree, the three million dollars that Mr. Martin talked about, looking at that, that would be a substantially less amount of money to do that. I mean, I, I know, I mean, I think we would love to have new facilities at the softball field. I, I'll go down there and I, I see what we have down there. There's no doubt about it. And, and the baseball field and so forth. But, you know, we've run into some circumstances here we didn't, we could not predict. And, uh, I'm just having a hard time coming for fourteen million dollars when we've already, it was already for fourteen million dollars or thirteen million dollars, we've already been hit for, you know, just this year. I mean, maybe it's something we could do over time in phases, uh, but I'd be more willing to see what the three million dollars can do for us at this point.
Tucker?
Thank you, Mr. Pugh.
Did you have something?
I did. Um, it's, don't shoot me, board, but I just, it's a data point. I want to have it. If we did a combination of this and if we said, okay, citizens, this is how much your tax would go up a year to fully fund it, Stacy, do you know what that would be? I'm not advocating that, just for the record, but I want to know.
Repeat that for me, please. I was-
The sales ta, the meals tax would pay for it.
Well, so what we proposed in the staff summary was to, to increase the meals tax by the two percent and, and dedicate that to debt service so that as county needs came up, we would have something building to give us like the flexibility we have with that reserve we're using right now. That, that was the school reserve of their leftover money. But if we had a, a reserve, it would give us some flexibility. That's why we suggested what we suggested. If we raised, um, real estate taxes, is that what you're saying? You'd need to do almost three cents.
Three cents. And it'll be dedicated solely to the school?
No. Well, it would, I would say what we've, what we have said is just dedicated to debt service because right now, it would go first to the schools. But what if in like-
Landfill.
Six years, we have a landfill issue or a, um, another school issue. Like, um, it leaves it open for you all to decide where you would want to, to debt service next, if we just dedicated to debt service. That's why we suggested the meals tax because it was easy to identify. And, um, it was a consumption tax, so it's not on the backs of every taxpayer. So that was why we did that. Um, that was our suggestion and, and the two percent is allowed by the state code now, so, um.
And which was the one that we had to have the state, the state had to bless it?
That's the additional sales tax.
But we can do the twos, two percent without any input?
Yeah, that's a one percent added to the overall state sales tax and then they, that goes strictly for school construction.
I'm just gonna ask, this is probably a stupid question, but you can straighten me out. Uh, the funding, uh, we financed for the, uh, raw intake project, the seven and a half million. Can that be utilized for this?
No. No, that's strictly for, that's strictly tied to the service authority and that's their debt. Um, so no, we can't. Yep.
I, I have a quick question, if y'all indulge me another time. Um, what's our current unassigned fund balance? Just unassigned?
Unassigned, probably about counting our, if, if you take out what we're required to take out, plus anything we've assigned, it's only about six million.
Okay. So three. So just half that, and, and this is talking about your operating reserves. If you, right now, the LGIP is at five and a half percent, right? So if we're looking at whatever the scenario is, if we are strategically putting that, um, to work for us, meaning interest earnings at five, five, I just ran five percent.
Yeah, I think we're-
For three million, it's a hundred. And I'm not talking about bond proceeds.
You're talking about Virginia investment pool.
Straight from your pocket or even mapping out to match what we want to replenish, you know, laddering some treasures. I, I don't care. Maybe we want to keep it flexible intentionally and just keeping it LGIP.
I know, shoot, I know our treasurer was getting ready to increase that.
Okay.
We had a conversation last week.
So if it, if you just halved it and put three million there, that could be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars additional revenues without lifting a finger, right? So to speak. If you do all six, that's three hundred thousand dollars more per year in interest, in interest earnings. Does that make sense? So-
Let me go back and look because I believe currently, I need to look at what we budgeted for interest versus what we're earning right now because I think we may need to, we may have some extra right there. You may have just ident, you may have just identified a revenue source that I had forgotten about because-
I'm just saying, I, I think the point is regardless of where y'all call it back or which scenario, if you pick from one in here, I think that we can come back with, uh, call it a fine-tune analysis and get y'all good, um, good key decision points to make the determination of what do, what can we live with cutting back or what can, what do we need? What can't we cut? You mentioned it, Ms. Tucker, you were mentioning the agricultural piece of it, right? That's, right, we're here in Amherst and that's a big driver for us. And, and why, that doesn't even make sense, right? That's what I think your point was. Um, so let us, let us fine tune this based on y'all's input from today. We can come back at the next board meeting. Um, the only thing I do want to point out, and this is the other question, I gave you half of response earlier when you asked about how we could fund in, in anticipation of that grant. We've done this numerous times where we know, let's say the total project is ten million dollars and we might have the opportunity to reapply and get five million dollars in grant. Well, we know we need five million dollars. So we go to the pool this fall, grab what we need and know, by the time the next pool cycles around in the spring, we'll know if we got that other grant or not. And by then, I think in your progress for construction and everything, you probably wouldn't need that additional five until next spring anyway. So then we could go back to VPSA. And again, the, and we wouldn't have to do, right now, the way the curve is inverted, the interim approach would be more expensive. You could get, still lock in, you know, four percent money here this fall, maybe even four percent money in the spring on those separate pieces. So that would be another way to answer your earlier question with an option, option B. We could lock in permanent financing for half of what we need now and keep the other five for later. And that way, you're not paying a higher than, I mean, I, I think right now, one-year money, as we learned on the Gateway Project, is five-plus percent. It's just the way we're, the environment we're in right now.
Okay.
Oh, and then the other part was if we wanted to keep, this is what we started talking about a few minutes ago. If we want to keep our place in line for the fall pool at any level, we make application by August twenty-eighth, which would require the school board to, to adopt a resolution either next week at August tenth meeting or we could probably, they're pretty, pretty flexible at VPSA. They could probably do it at their September fourteenth meeting to approve making application to the fall pool and asking the county to issue its GO bonds. Now, that does not obligate you to move forward with issuing the bonds or moving forward in the fall pool. You'll have until October fifth or sixth really to make that determination. Um, I think you, yeah, sorry.
So our next meeting is fifteenth?
Yes, sir. August fifteenth.
Prior to the application deadline, correct?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
So does, does any of my fellow board members feel like you're ready to vote on this stuff? Well, Mr. Pugh, I know you are. Okay, don't bother. Does anybody feel like they're ready to vote on it?
Well, I've got a vote in my head, but there's some, some information that I'd like to hear before I come to a final conclusion.
I agree. So I, I, what I'm hearing is, is that we'd like for you to come back on the fifteenth with options. And you've heard several different scenarios, all right?
And we'll work to-
Cutting things out, different ways to look at funding the full thing, whatever it is. Bring us the options and let us look at it.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And what I'd like to do is come back as well and I can talk with the architect engineer and look and see if there's a way we can take the classrooms that, if we're not gonna get the new cafeteria, which I can, you know, I'll take the money, I'll, I'll take whatever funding you feel obliged to authorize. I could look at the old auditorium and see if I could switch those classrooms that are gonna be in the new, in the old, in the existing cafeteria and see if we can use some of that space, that space so we can still utilize the cafeteria and still get the classroom done. I just don't know what the engineering design aspect of that, what it looked like. But, so if I say, you know, the, the three million, they could say, well, it's gonna cost additional, you know, five hundred thousand to do that. So I would have those numbers for you at the next board meeting, I would hope, if that's, if that suffices for you.
That's great. Our school friends, I hope you know this is difficult for us. I mean, we'd love to be able to give you everything, but some hard decisions, right? So, uh, we need to do our due diligence. So, all right. Well, thank you so much. Look forward to seeing you in two weeks.
Thank you.
Okay. Limited brewery and limited distillery discussion, Mr. Creasy.
All right, Chairman, Board, um, you all had asked us to prepare a presentation permitting limited breweries and limited distilleries. Included in this presentation is, of course, the definitions of such zoning permits, ENS and stormwater permits and the building permit. Um, of course, our zoning ordinance refers right back to state code for such uses. For limited breweries, um, there's two important things. One, it has to be located on a farm in the Commonwealth or agricultural land and produce no more than fifteen thousand barrels of beer per calendar year. That is the definition of a limited brewery, plus these, the other verbiage in there, but that is the, the basic principle of it. Below it, I also have the, um, the state definition for a brewery license, which I'll get into prior zoning districts, uh, but that's not really important to the topic at hand. And for a limited distillery, it's pretty much the same thing. However, there is not a limit on how much can be produced. It just must be produced on a farm in the Commonwealth or, and, or zoned A1 and the product's grown for both a limited brewery and a limited distillery, such as the hops, uh, the barley, the wheat, however they make it, is grown on the property, such as those establishments of the limited brewery slash distillery. And please stop me at any time if you have any questions.
Okay, so limited brewery, fifteen thousand barrels of beer per calendar year, located on a farm or agricultural land, right?
Yes, sir.
So I get it, you get to manufacture it there. Does it also allow you to sell?
Yes, sir, it does. Um, that goes into, that's not shown on the state code, um, this portion that I have here, but it gives the option further down state code that you can offer for sale as well, such as like a tasting room.
A tasting room?
Yes. So what you could imagine as, um-
Got a bar?
Pretty much. I mean, for lack of better terms. Yes, sir.
Just in full disclosure, I asked for this to be put on the agenda due to the, uh, large clearing that's been occurring on Roses Mill Road and the rumor, I don't know if it's even a rumor, if they've submitted to build a brewery, petting zoo, whatever else on Roses Mill Road, which has a lot of citizens concerned, including myself. Thank you.
So for, uh, the zoning permit, districts are permitted by right. It's, um, in the A1 district, uh, both the limited brewery and distillery are permitted by right. In the B2 district, a not a limited brewery. So back up here to the definition for a brewery, brewery license, that is permitted in your B2 district. Um, for special exceptions, both are a special exception in your village district. These are your areas such as up in Elan. Um, there's a couple areas up in Temperance. Of course, Wright Shop Road has a few as well, and so does Riverville Road down the sixty. Um, per section eleven oh three, point oh three, point one, staff has already deemed these type of uses to have to go through a major site plan approval. Um, in state code, uh, the state, as you know, we are a Dillon role state, so the state gives us the powers in which we are able to enforce. The state allows for the limited brewery and limited distillery for their off-street parking to be exempt from zoning ordinances. We have not done that. So per that, we are allowed to enforce a major site plan on all these developments. And as you can see here, V dot, VDH, the Service Authority, Town of Amherst, and of course, planning and zoning, if applicable, are all signatures on these major site plans. For ENS and stormwater, um, ENS, all developments that disturb more than ten thousand square feet must submit an ENS plan, uh, for approval. ENS plans account for stormwater quantity, not quality. Stormwater quality is accounted for through a stormwater permit in which our authority is DEQ. We do not have our own stormwater program here. Um, in addition to that, um, if a proposed development is proposing to disturb less than ten thousand square feet, uh, per major site plan requirements, ENS measures must still be put in place, such as silt fence, um, permanent seating, blanket matting, things of that nature. In regards to stormwater, a Senate bill was passed, um, July first and came into effect July first, in which, in the bulleted area, farm building or structures on a parcel of land with a total impervious cover percentage, including the impervious cover from the farm building or structure to be constructed of less than five percent, means that they can, they do not have to technically get a stormwater permit. They instead fill out an agreement in lieu of a stormwater management plan, meaning they do not have to go through review with DEQ for such uses. And below that, we have the definition for farm building or structure and what agrotourism activity is. For building permits, um, these buildings such as a tasting room, um, and other portions of this type of development are exempt from building code. However, if they were to have, um, a restaurant or serve any type of food, all requirements of VDH and the two thousand eighteen statewide building code would be deemed enforceable. And regards to this, there are certain requirements they would have to meet, such as they would have to have a sign posted stating that this sign does not meet the two thousand eighteen statewide building code and some other things I did not list on this permit if they were to meet that exemption. Are there any questions?
Why, yes. So you're, you're saying that this site on Roses Mill did not have to do erosion seven control stormwater plans because it's considered an agrotourism building or structure?
So we, we were submitted a minor site plan in which staff rejected that submittal because it did not meet the minimum requirements of a major site plan. So at this time, nothing has been submitted for that development. However, since staff has already deemed this as a major site plan, um, and we already know through inspections that the grade work is over ten thousand square feet, they will have to provide an ENS plan to the county for approval. Now, if going over that plan, if the total impervious surface- Now, if going over that plan, if the total impervious surface is less than or equal to five percent over the total parcel, they are exempt from DEQ stormwater regulations. But they will not be exempt from an ENS plan which accounts for stormwater quantity.
So are they under a stop work order now?
They're under a notice to comply.
And how long is that in place?
Um, that gives them seven days to seed and straw, um, the area that was graded. Now, they do have a permit through the Department of Forestry, in which is very hard, we have no really regulations over that when they have a permit through the Department of Forestry.
Which does not allow for grubbing of the stumps, correct?
Correct, but for the area-
They grub the stumps?
No.
They have none?
One area it is, and that's what they're under the notice to comply for.
So stormwater is iffy, ENS is iffy, they're permitted by right, but they will have to have a major site plan. And where does V dot come into play?
Uh, for the entrance.
Just the entrance? What about the remainder of Roses Mill getting back to one fifty-one?
Um, they would not be, well, unless, of course, that they were to mess that up during the construction process, then V dot would-
You know what's gonna mess up is when people try to pull out on one fifty-one after partaking in the brewery, right?
Now, I, I believe that would be an issue for the sheriff's office, not, and not necessarily V dot.
Roses Mill Road cannot handle that amount of traffic.
And, and that's what the major site plan would help Bill to offer to the developer. If he has to upgrade Roses Mill or not, based upon the trip generation count that is provided to them.
So, okay, so if the trip generation indicated it needed to upgrade Roses Mill Road, V dot would require it, which is probably unlikely.
I think that is a fair assessment.
Yeah? Any questions? So our hands are fairly tied because we chose to allow these at some point by right in the agricultural district.
Correct. Yes, sir.
Thank you so much. Moving on, County Attorney's report?
I have nothing.
Ladies and committee reports, Planning Commission, Mr. Pugh.
Yeah, we, we had a meeting on seven twenty. Um, the Planning Commission recommended approval of a special exception to the, to the board here for two-family dwelling with the outward appearance of a single-family dwelling in the RMU District in Old Madison. Also, we had our first read of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash seven before us today, so we already know about that. The old Executive Inn, or it used to be the Oil Lodge, I don't, I don't know all the names that it had, but the, uh, old motel that's right there near the San Patel property has been bought, and that should be demolished here within the next few weeks. So that's a good thing. Pre-construction meetings for Cookout and Dunkin' Donuts took place. Cassio and Sons will be receiving the A-plus achievement award for the Route twenty-nine Business Beautification Committee for the upgrades to their commercial building. And the Planning Commission will be holding a workshop on August seventh to discuss utility-scale solar farms. Uh, some more information, uh, Interx, uh, energy, I don't know, you know, Interx or whatever, the, uh, has submitted a revised special exception application for utility-scale solar farm at twenty-five oh eight Patrick Henry Highway. That was the one that, uh, had come before us and then got pulled at the last minute. Uh, there will be Airbnb in the A1 district coming before the Planning Commission. Um, other than that, the Planning Commission's been active, been busy. Tyler's doing a great job, and, uh, continue to have a lot of Airbnbs come before the board.
Thank you, Mr. Pugh. Citizen comment. Is anyone present or would like to address the board? Ms. Dokos, come forward and please state your district and name.
Ms. Dokos, and my district is one. And, um, right now, I've got one of the most beautiful pieces of property on the earth, and I bought it because it was that. And now I've got behind me a huge solar power plant, and on the other side, a brewery that wants to come. So, um, it's quite concerning to my sister and I, along with quite a few other residents on the road. Um, I just want to let you guys know how much I love Amherst. Every single one of you, I, I, I love it. And I bought this property because I thought it was the most beautiful thing I'd ever seen. And now, I'm faced with all these that, that don't just affect me, but I think all of Amherst. It, you know, it, we look out on the most beautiful untouched national forest, and that will look down. I mean, there's no way you won't be able to see it once they, they take away all these trees, and that they plan on doing. And I know that it's progress, and you, you all need to make money, and there's things that you need to do, but I just wanted you to know how I feel. And, um, that's all. Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to address the board? Mr. Bryant should come forth and state your district and name.
Good afternoon, Board. I'm Sam Bryant, District One, Tom Martin. Um, you know, I live in the northern part of the county. You've got a lot of great things going on in the southern part of the county. We need something that's untouched. I'll continue to remind you of the Ty River and the Pine River that goes into James River and goes into the watershed for Chesapeake Bay, and, uh, that's a solar farm. With those contour lines and that elevation is gonna be a nightmare, and I'd almost bet my reputation it's gonna get in the water. And, uh, this new project, please drive through Caddie's Mountain Road and take a look at it. I have to harass people in my own way with my tractor every fall with people that are illegally hunting from the road, and that's the last thing I need on my side, 'cause twenty-nine is a cut-through right there, is to have people run into my family, run into my tractor, be down in a ditch, there's no guardrails. Please take a look, drive through there. It's the most beautiful part of Amherst County, in my opinion. It looks back to the west, uh, to, uh, Lowesville and Temperance and the Big De Priest. And, um, I don't quite understand why it's open season on Nelson, on, on northern Amherst County, right on the Amherst County line. There are great other projects that could be done, like the Ag Center, the complex, there's just other things that we could look at. But for some reason, people are interested in, in our part of the, the world. And, um, luckily enough, I own both sides of the road down there just a little bit, and I'm gonna be here with you, kind of in your face respectfully every time I can. So I'd ask you not to change it. Please come look at it. If you'd like to look at my place, give me a call. Um, Claudia and Tom have my number. Uh, Stacy has my number. I'd be glad to show it to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else present that would like to address the board? Okay, citizen comment is closed. Matters from the board. Ms. Tucker?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Mr. Pugh?
I have nothing.
Mr. Wade?
Nothing, sir.
Uh, I would ask staff and Mr. Popovich to look at these agritourism, at least certain things like breweries and stuff, and whether or not, I'd like a recommendation on whether or not we should be requiring special use permits for them in certain areas. Bring that back to us.
Well, I mean, I, I would say that, yeah, we probably should. Consider, you gotta consider the location where some of these items, or some of these places are located.
I, I, I agree wholeheartedly. I mean, this is great use, horrible location. Um, so I'm, I'm asking for recommendations on ordinance changes. So, that's where I'm at. All right. If there's no other matters from the board, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion on the floor by Mr. Wade. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Uh-huh.
I vote aye. We stand adjourned till the fifteenth.